Good evening. This is June 12, 2017. It's Monday at 7:00 PM and I'm called the Speedway Town Council meeting to order. I'm Gary Rakes, President of the Council, and I'd like to introduce a few of the participants this evening. To my far right is Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
Next to Eileen is our Vice President of our Council, Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
Next to me is Councilor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Evening. And next to Jason is our Town Manager, Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening.
And finally, we have Monty Combs, our Clerk Treasurer.
Good evening.
The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And if everyone would rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First couple of items on the agenda after that are minutes from previous meetings. The first one is the approval of the Town Council meeting from May 22. These have been distributed before the meeting this evening. Any changes or comments on those? Okay, we'll accept those as presented. Minutes of approval of memorandum for the May 22 executive session of the Town Council. Any changes or comments to those? We'll accept those as distributed as well. The next item on the agenda is the Citizen of the Month. Connie, if you would please come forward and present.
Thank you. On behalf of the town and the Speedway Chamber of Commerce, I would like to present the June Citizen of the Month Award to Adam Gonzalez. Adam, you can come up. Adam was actually nominated by Lauren George at Indianapolis Motor Speedway. The reason why she nominated him was because we did our first Home Helpers Meeting, our project, in April. And Adam, single-handedly, got us 15 people from Indianapolis Motor Speedway to come on the weekend and donate their time to help Speedway residents in need. So, we were thrilled with that. But I know Adam's been involved with a lot of things in the community, and he also led the redevelopment efforts, was like the citizen organizer for that. So, on behalf of the town and the chamber, I want to say congratulations. Gary's got your plaque or your certificate up there.
Actually, I don't.
There you go.
Jason will come around.
Okay. I'm gonna take a picture. So, you're not gonna stand over there?
Actually, if you want to stand back next to the podium, you can actually get it on camera. There, he's got the other camera.
Okay, ready? Let me get a good one.
I want you to do that.
And we also wanted to give you a certificate to Daredevil Brewing. I understand that's one of your favorite places. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Congrats. Any comments for Adam before he steps out of the building or away? Congrats. Thanks for your service. You served on parks and some other committees and boards in town. So, thanks so much for that, too. All right. Next item on the agenda, actually, I'm gonna add a couple. Tim Canyou, would you come forward? You had something you wanted to share.
My name's Tim Canyou. I'm the Senior Vice Commander of the Frank T. Strayer Veterans and Foreign Wars Post over here next to where the muggin' bun. On the 22nd, we are having a suicide awareness walk for veterans. Some of you know that there's quite a problem with that. Twenty-two veterans a day are taking their lives. Luckily, that is down a little bit. But all the proceeds for the walk are going to a good organization to help delay those suicides. So, if any of the Town Council members can attend that, or any of the community can attend that, we'd really appreciate it. I'd have less than flyers here on the podium if anybody's interested in that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim, could you repeat the time again? Just?
It is June 17, Saturday, at 11:00 AM.
Thank you. All right. So, the next item on the agenda is a request for temporary road closure for Crawfordsville Road for the Bloomington Gold Road Tour. This will be on Saturday, the 24th. Gentlemen, would you like to come forward and talk about your group, please?
Hello. My name is Joe Reams. I'm from Bloomington Gold, Director of the Bloomington Gold Road Tour. Thanks for having me, for one thing, at such short notice. I do have a map of our road tour, if you want to take a look at it while I'm talking. They, oops, sorry. We did this last year, and you granted us permission to do the same particular route. We're doing the same thing this year, although this year, we are planning to come back to Speedway for some of the restaurants. I've been working with Connie Harris, as a matter of fact. So, we've got some restaurants that participate for our people that are on the road tour. And we will come back into town. I rented the Foyt parking area for them to park in, so it won't be too congested in that way. We're going to a shorter route. It'll be going around the airport and then back. And then, on the way back, the people are actually on, we call it on their own, but they have to obey the stoplights and everything to get into town. So, there won't be any blockage in town. It's mainly to get out of the Speedway and head down to Dandy Trail, and then we go around the airport and back. So, pretty much the same. Should be about 400 cars or so that come out of the Speedway, and there may not be as many coming to town. We probably, maybe a third of that, or maybe a quarter of that, so about 150, 175 cars, we kind of expect. Kind of hard to tell, you know, who's gonna come into town. But we hope many, so everybody can take advantage of it. Should be fun.
Any questions from the Council?
And when is this in time?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Saturday, the 24th, and we're kicking it off an hour earlier, so it'll be about on 5:00.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM, yeah. And we should be pretty much done with it, probably an hour, the most.
The whole drive, or you mean the actual blocking off of the street?
Yeah, out of the Speedway. Took us 45 minutes last year. So, the last car goes out, they start opening up everything, and as we go along, you know.
Okay.
I have Brett McAtee. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please.
Brett McAtee is responsible, you know, with all the police and that kind of thing, security and motor escort and all that.
Right. So, Brett is with Indianapolis Police Department.
Right, right, right.
And that service he provides to a variety of groups that come to Indianapolis that need that service. And then, our police department works in association with Brett and other groups like that.
That's exactly right, all right.
So, just for the public that can't necessarily see the route, it leaves the track Indianapolis Motor Speedway through Gate 2 and turns west on 16th, goes to the roundabout, and continues out Hall Memorial Road way, or Crawfordsville Road, all the way to Dandy Trail, which is obviously quite a ways outside of town, goes up and around Eagle Creek Airport, comes back down that same route, and returns to Main Street and Foyt, as you said. So, it's a fairly simple route. Any other comments or questions from the Council? Take a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for temporary road closure on June 24 for the Bloomington Gold event.
Second.
We have a motion to temporarily close Crawfordsville Road, also a bit of 16th Street, for the Bloomington Gold event. Any comments or questions? Any from the audience? All those in favor of approving this road closure, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 4-0.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Forward to seeing your cars.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item is Ordinance 1294. It's an ordinance authorizing issuance of the Town of Speedway, Indiana Taxable Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2017 and the lending of the proceeds thereof to the borrower thereof, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. First reading. That was easy to say, Tim. Why didn't I have you read that?
Sure. We like to keep them short and simple here. This ordinance, as you mentioned, is the first reading. We'll need to come back next time. Is the last public approval portion for the Willshaw Project. This ordinance, on May 11, the Economic Development Commission held a public hearing and authorized the issuance of the bonds for the project. This is now the Town Council's approval of those bonds, authorizing staff to move forward when appropriate. This ordinance also approves all the forms of documents, including the funding agreement, the loan agreements, and everything else that would be associated to execute the bonds and move the project forward. This ordinance does not bind the town, it just authorizes the town to proceed with the bond issue when they are ready to do so. So, we still have quite a bit of due diligence to do on the project. We're still, look like we're on track to close mid-July sometime, mid-end July. So, we're checking list items off every day, continue to make progress, but we still have a little ways to go. So, this is authorizing us to move forward when the time is right. We still could, if things fell apart at the last minute, we could still pull out. We do not need to issue these bonds until it's ready to go.
Do we have a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Ordinance 1294, authorizing bond issuance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any comments or questions for Tim?
It's just first reading.
First reading, sorry.
Yes, first reading.
Okay, perfect.
So, you may have mentioned this, you expect second reading to come at the next council meeting?
Yeah, we anticipate coming to the next council meeting for second reading.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments beyond that? Any from the audience?
All the, just note that all the forms of documents that are noted in the ordinance are available to look at at the Town Annex at any time, if the House so chooses.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's approve the first reading, take a vote on the first reading. All those in favor of Ordinance 1294 as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed? This carries 4-0, and we'll move towards second reading at our next meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Tim, while you're up there.
I figured that was gonna happen.
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and give your economic development report, please?
Sure. I'll keep it pretty short tonight. I'm just returning from vacation, so still getting up to speed on everything that happened while I was gone. But do want to make sure the public knows that you should see construction up along Crawfordsville Road. The Get Go Gas Station is under construction currently, and they're making pretty swift progress of that. So, that's exciting to see. That's been delayed three times before, so we're glad to see construction there. And you should also see the mobilization on the courtyard by Marriott. The groundbreaking was about a month ago, and they anticipate getting started on that anytime, hopefully this week. The Willshaw Project, as I just mentioned, we continue to do due diligence. There's still a lot of just small cleanup items, documents we need, and just most of them are on the developer's side. We're waiting for some confirmation and ultimately waiting for their bank financing to go through before we can move forward. But we still look to be on target for July sometime, groundbreaking, and then starting all the infrastructure improvements that need to happen after that. So, I also just wanted to say a quick thank you. We're gonna recognize the ban robotics boosters that helped out the SRC with all their parking duties this year. So, we're gonna present a check to them for all their work at our SRC meeting next Monday. But they came through with us and provided the volunteers for all the parking through the month of May. And this being my first month, it was a lot to take in and understand, and I appreciated all their help because they made it a lot easier for me. But in particular, Tammy Smith helped out a lot on the weekends, covering a lot of shifts, so we appreciate that.
Any more comments or questions? Thanks, welcome back.
Thanks, Tim.
Next report from Department Supervisor would be Chief Jim Campbell, Police Department.
Good evening. I thought I'd give you kind of a Reader's Digest version of the 500 After Action. If you've got any questions beyond that, ask away. But, you know, first of all, the crowd was, it was not the 100th running, but it was very close. And, you know, for the crowd size, it's probably one of the best that they've had in years. We had a vice presidential visit, which created some issues, but it was pretty much handled by the Secret Service. Some people probably met a few of those folks more than others. But, you know, the coordination, cooperation with them was, you know, part of the planning process for this event. You know, I'm gonna mention weather, because the whole month of May, it was weather. I think you know we have a member of the National Weather Service sitting up there. We did talk to him a lot. And even with that, it was still hard to try to determine, you know, because you've gotta have a Plan A, B, C, D, depending on what happens. I gotta be honest, and the rainstorm at the end of the race with weather didn't help us much. You know, traffic on 16th Street on the outbound moved very smoothly. Northbound was not quite as well, and weather was part of that. Typically, and the Department of Homeland Security has a helicopter up that we used. You know, when the weather turned bad and the lightning, and in fact, when it started this way, they're kinda, you know, we gotta go to the ground. What that does is takes away your ability to identify pinch points, and when you have one of those, it doesn't take long for traffic to back up. But again, both inbound and outbound, for the most part, you know, went pretty smoothly. The weather affected the parking in the lots. I think, you know, overall, people made it to their seats and everybody got in in time for the event. You know, I just, I can't say enough, I think overall, it was a good day for us. You know, when you look at the fact that, again, it's a SEER II, you know, a primary function today is the safety of people, you know, and the security of an event. Could not be done without the cooperation from local, state, and federal agencies. And it really is a partnership between government and a private entity. And I can't say enough for the cooperation with IMS and, you know, the folks over there. That's kind of my Reader's Digest version. We've already moved on to NASCAR. Tomorrow will be our first meeting, first public meeting, to discuss security for the NASCAR event. Thirdly, this weekend was Relay for Life, which, you know, thanks to our Citizens Academy alumni, they pretty much carried the ball for us during that event. And can't say enough for what they do for us at events like that. Along with the bicycle race, we had volunteers and reserves there. Today, we swore in a new chaplain, Father Tucci, and, you know, we're looking forward to him being part of that chaplain staff, and I think he's pretty excited about joining. The last one is, on June 20, we have a meeting with the police chiefs, you know, it's a chief's area meeting, you know, everything from Carmel to Greenwood, Brownsburg to Lawrence, and there's probably about 10 of the police chiefs from the surrounding area. That usually gives us a real good opportunity to talk about issues that they're dealing with, common concerns, like our CAD system, our new radios that are gonna need to be coming in 2018. So, you know, it is an opportunity to kind of share and find out what, you know, what's going on in other communities. So, that's... Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next up is the Fire Department, and I think our Chief Fishburne's here, so his Trusty Assistant Chief.
Yes. Good evening, Councilor. Mike Lynch, Assistant Chief of the Speedway Fire Department. Just have a couple update items for you. First, to echo Chief Campbell's comments, May was a good month for us. Everything went really well. I don't know if you realize or not, but on race day, every fire department in Marion County sends assets. And when I say assets, I'm talking fire engines, ladder trucks, chief officers, safety officers, out here to protect our community and the Motor Speedway. Obviously, with traffic, if we were to have a house fire or an apartment fire, trying to get big trucks around town is not easy. So, we have to pre-stage stuff all over the place, and we really appreciate our local partners and what they do to keep our community and the event safe during the month of May. We did have a couple apartment fires last month. One of them I wanted to mention to you was in Brickyard Flats, and just wanted to take an opportunity to let you know that that was caused by a juvenile that was playing with a lighter. And just want to remind folks that might be watching tonight that, you know, lighters and matches are as dangerous as a loaded gun. So, make sure you keep those matches and lighters in your pocket. In the hands of a curious child, that could have been a pretty tragic situation. I'm thankful that it wasn't. The family made it out, and all of their neighbors made it out okay. But just wanted to take this opportunity to remind people how dangerous those things can be. So far, we're about six months into the year, and just wanted to let you know, we're seeing about a 7% uptick in our run numbers. And we haven't really been able to dive in yet and figure out why that's happening. But just to give you general awareness that that's happening, and we're kind of looking into that, we'll be watching that as well throughout the year. The last thing I wanted to share with you is just kind of an update on our fire prevention program, specifically our part-time inspector that you authorized us to hire at the beginning of the year. So, Nick Alexander is a full-time firefighter with the city of Lawrence, and on his days off, he comes to Speedway and is our part-time fire inspector for us. Last year, we had three firefighters, four Speedway, that when we had full staffing, they could come off the truck and go out and do inspections. And that was a great program, but they just couldn't get out into the community enough. And I wanted to just give you a quick snapshot of what Nick's been able to do just in the first five months, five and a half months he's been there. So, last year, at this time, we had completed 81 annual fire inspections, and Nick has completed 137 to date. When it comes to re-inspections, we'll go back to the business to see what progress they've made to make those corrections. Last year, we did 14. This year, he's been able to do 85. Our compliance rate, as far as seeing that violations are cleared and life safety issues have been corrected, last year, our compliance rate was 41%, and so far this year, it's 65%. So, we're making a lot of progress there. I'll also mention, we haven't had to use any of the tools to fine or to close a business, anything like that. It's all been working with the business community as, you know, just a great partnership to keep in their business and their customers safe. So, appreciate your support in that effort, and welcome any questions that you have.
Thanks for your report.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Street Department, Wendell Walters.
Good evening, Councilors. Just some updates on your Street Department. Last month was a busy month for us. June is starting out the same way with a couple events that we support, working with our partners, Police and Fire. Our paving project has started in the Northtown area. We're hoping that's a three-to-four week project, and we'll be out of that neighborhood with some new ramps and curb repairs and new asphalt. I took Jacob, invited him to a meeting with NDOT with me. We are going to be applying for our Community Crossing Grant again. This is a 50-50 match program, so we're going to get with our Clerk Treasurer and see how much money that we have that we can match up and put towards our projects. Hopefully, we'll be awarded again and give us some more workable money to put back into our infrastructure. Just real quick on projects, our Main Street Alley project is, we went through the final punch list. We're in payment mode now. Our dry-run project is, final walkthrough was Friday. Jacob was out with us on that. Our 72-inch sewer, we're kind of like 98% done on that. We have some asphalt sealing that needs to be done, and get that company to respond back and get that done, and we should be able to close that one out, so. Kind of a quick, busy month. Guys are out doing all the maintenance, some storm repairs, and everything that we do, so be careful out there, folks.
Any comments or questions?
As you can hear, Wendell's keeping me pretty busy. Just seeing you guys.
Jacob from every place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell.
Steve Hurst with our Water Works.
Good evening. Couple of brief things. Month of May was real smooth for the Water Works. We had no issues with either plan or out and distribution system, including race day. We pumped out 3.8 million gallons this year, which is about a half a million short, or less than we had last year, or pumped out last year. So, it was a good month. The second item I've got is the consumer competence report should be going out towards the end of this week. What that is, is a water quality report for 2016. I.D.M. requires us to send that out once a year. So, June is when we send ours out. So, everybody'll get one, property owners, homeowners, industries. We'll have extra copies for the industries, restaurants, just about everybody that needs one apartment complexes, so they can post them for their residence. And we'll also have it, a pile of them here at the Town Hall, library, and so forth. We'll also have it on the town's website. We'll also have it in the Speedway Press, most likely next week. So, there's no excuse for not seeing it. It's gonna be everywhere for a while. So, that concludes my report for tonight.
Great. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
I don't see Norm Barry, so, our wastewater department supervisor, so we'll let, give him a pass. Before I move on to item eight, Chuck Bennett, who had asked for a couple of minutes of time to speak to the Council, so, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rakes. I appreciate it. Just for the Town Council's update, I was here on May 22, I think, not realizing that I had to get, I guess, permission or be granted time to speak. So, this may not be as timely as it was. So, I put off coming before the Town Council tonight to this point, is I thought that maybe a partnership between the citizens and the SRC could have been established to work together to prevent the needless destruction of parts of the historic district, or further devalue the residential properties located in close proximity to Main Street. I was hoping that a positive, productive partnership like the one that occurred in 2007 and 2008 with the SRC Chad Lethick from the Indiana Historical Landmarks Foundation, the Frasers who were with the OSCNA at the time, and myself, where we walked the historic district, especially the west side of Main Street, determining which buildings might be saved because the master plan called for destruction of all those buildings. With that partnership, we were able to identify several buildings. One was the Rosner Building, and once the Wilcox Project went in, and Vince Knoblet commented that you can always throw up new buildings, but you can't replace character, we knew we had a diamond in the rough. But I think part of that was because we did a partnership. So, I attempted to offer a partnership of the same way with the SRC, so that we could prevent the needless destruction of, again, historic district. I also relied on the 2008 Urban Land Institute study, the economic study done in 2010 by the town, and then the Wayne Township Comprehensive Land Unit, which said, or, excuse me, Land Use Plan, which said that the commercial village mixed-use land should be strictly restricted to the existing boundary formed by the alley just west of Main Street from 10th to 16th Streets. I also attended the SRC meeting in April to see if we could talk about maybe not putting up parking lots in the neighborhood. I was granted time to speak, but no one contacted me with the research that I had done. I also asked some questions in 2010 about those properties, and I'd like to pose those again tonight. I do know and understand that the SRC can, like any property owner, do what they want with the property, which includes demolition of the structures on that property. But again, I guess my questions go the more public nature of the goals of the SRC. The questions I asked in 2010, again, in April, were, was or is the source of the funding to be utilized for acquisition and demolition of a property? What was the source of that funding? If the monies were used to purchase and or demolish the property or from the TIF district, is that property located within the TIF boundary? If it's not located within the TIF boundary, can TIF monies be used outside the TIF district? And the last one, can the proposed parking area not be located in an area that does not cause the needless demolition of residential structures within the national registered neighborhood? The main example I was gonna refer to is the property at 4918 West 14th Street. The SRC purchased that property for $88,000. The demolition cost was $7,500. You total that up quickly, that's $95,500. The property was just recently sold for $17,455, resulting in a loss of $78,045 on that property. I didn't know who covered that loss. I didn't know if the plans go forward with the SRC buying more properties. If they just buy four more properties, you're talking $300,000 in losses. Since I also live within six houses of Main Street, I'm concerned about my property values as well, which I've made those concerns. But I keep it short, appreciate the time to air my concerns, and I just would like to also always say, we started off as proper and positive development between the residents and the town. It's now moved to concerns the residents kind of being ignored, and as a resident, that has me deeply troubled. And I appreciate the time, and I'll leave my comments here just in case later.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. So, anybody have any comments that they want to make to that, or we're good to move to the next topic? Okay. So, the next item on the agenda are the approval claims and utility adjustments from the Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The claims for tonight run from May 20 through June 9, this past Friday. As I many times say, it's pretty normal business as usual. We did correct the last time when we had some glitch in there on the SRC, and that was fixed. That just had to do with a change in account numbers, but these are typical claims, and I appreciate your approval. and I appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to approve the claims. Any comments or questions? Any from the audience? All those in favor of approving the claims as presented by the Clerk Treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 4-0. 4-0.
Utility adjustments you have, that I've submitted, total of $330, $365, I believe it is, for this period, the same from May the 10th, May the 20th, excuse me, to June the 9th. And appreciate your approval there as well.
Mr. President, may we approve the adjustments presented by Clerk Treasurer?
Second.
This, utility adjustments have been, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any comments or questions on that? Any from the audience? All those in favor of approving the adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This carries 4-0. Any other reports, Monty?
No, sir.
Mr. Glaisdell.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, thank you, and congratulations to the employees of the Town of Speedway on a successful running of the 500. This is my first year seeing the 500, from the perspective of an employee of the town. And, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it. It's really remarkable what, what the town really does to make that event successful. Some of it you see, it's very clear, you know, a lot, particularly a lot of the public safety work, which is very important. But there's also a lot going on in the background, both the work preparing the town, getting it ready, as well as the work of kind of putting the town back together again after, after the 500. Just a lot of hours, a lot of people, you know, make sacrifices to make that happen. So, so again, thanks to the, to the employees. It was a great event. I'll also go ahead and plug again the Aging in Police Program. I mentioned at the last council meeting, this is going to be the last council meeting I plug it at. This is, this is the last chance. We'd like to get the applications in, in this week. We've talked a lot about it, and there's been a lot of press that we've generated. So, again, if you're 55 and older, or have a disability, this is a great program. You can get some money for, for home modifications, home improvement projects. Again, we're trying to get as many applications in as we can. That, that makes our application to the state stronger. So, if you, if you have an application, you haven't applied, if you're still curious about the program, please reach out to myself or Michelle Lydic could also assist you. And we'll get your questions answered and get you in touch with the right people. Last thing I want to mention is the MPO, there was a, the MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, does, handles a lot of federal road funding. They just adopted their 2022 plan. They had a press release. Speedway did get a project awarded for a left turn lane along Crawfordville Road into one of the shopping centers. Wendell's been working very hard to get that in there. It's a good news, bad news thing. Good news is that it was adopted, and our plan is accepted. The bad news is that it's out in 2022. There are some things we can do to try to move that up as much as possible. No, no guarantees, but, you know, we'll have the plans ready. We'll, we'll be ready to go if we can get in earlier. So, that's, that's my report.
Great. Any questions from the council?
Nope.
Thanks for a good first month.
Thanks.
Reports from my councilors? Jason?
Nothing for me tonight.
Eileen?
Just thanks to all of our employees, month of May, and it was really hard on them. I know we see our public safety people out working their butts off all the time, but there's people behind the scenes, such as water, sewer, and all that too, so thanks to all those guys. Let's go.
Jeff?
I echo Eileen's statement that, that, you know, we, we continue to function at a high level as a town when we've got this massive event going. So, thank you, thank you all for, for helping out and making it all happen. That's really all I have.
Yep, yep, great. Me too. Echo the same thanks for everyone for the month of May, including residents and businesses that, that reach out to that, half a million people or so that visited in the month. And Relay for Life was mentioned earlier, that occurred at the park, at Meadowwood, excuse me, at Leonard Park, and it seemed like a huge success, it sounded like a huge success at different times. I live across the street, so it was just great to see folks getting together for a terrific cause. That's all I have to report unless someone has something else. Go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:35, and it's adjourned.